Good evening. Welcome to the Dallas Center Grimes School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Anne Wimhoff and I am the Director of Communications at DCG. I will be tonight's moderator. Tonight, we welcome the most candidates that have run for DCG School Board in the last 15 years. We are using this experience and have worked with students to make this evening an educational opportunity for them to learn about our government system. There will be two students asking the questions to the four candidates present this evening. York Meggison and Isabella Baumann. Additionally, AP Government and US History Students work to develop the questions you will hear asked to our candidates tonight. There will be an opportunity in a moment for each candidate to introduce themselves. Please know, there are write-in candidates. However, we limited tonight's event to those that are formally registered and on the ballot. On Tuesday, November 2nd, all DCG registered voters have the opportunity to vote for the at-large open seat, along with voters in District 1 and District 2, voting for candidates for the one open seat in each of their districts. We have asked the candidates to limit their answers to three minutes. At the conclusion of tonight's question and answer session with students, the candidates will be available for members of the audience to get to know them on a one-on-one basis. A final few reminders before I turn it over to the candidates this evening. Please silence your cell phones and we also ask you to hold your applause. It takes a lot of courage to put yourself out there, candidates, and good leadership is important. So, thank you. I'd also like to thank the Polk County Sheriff's Department for their presence here this evening. Thank you to BCP Live for helping with the sound and the recording of tonight. Tonight's meeting will be posted on our YouTube channel 24 hours after the conclusion of this evening's forum. I would now like to turn it over to the candidates to introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Megan Dickinson, Meg. I live in Dallas Center. I am a mom of two children and I decided to throw my hat in the ring for the at-large position. One of the reasons I did that is because I'll only ever be able to run for an at-large position because I live in the country. That said, I think that I can bring a unique perspective to the board and that unique perspective comes threefold. I am a mother of two small children who will be in the DCG district for, oh heck, I don't know, they're in third grade now, so at least nine more years. And that's really important to have a hand in their education as things move forward. I'm also a former educator. I was an adjunct English professor at DMAC. I also had the opportunity to teach English at St. Cloud State University while I was doing my graduate work there. Shockingly enough, my master's thesis, I just got an email about this, has been downloaded 4,351 times, which is astonishing, in 107 countries, so I feel a little famous because I have a microphone and a really popular thesis from like five years ago. But in teaching, I have been able to see what the end result of a lot of Iowa school education is. And there's absolutely room for improvement there and I think that that's something that I can bring to the table. And finally, I am also a forward-facing business owner in Dallas Center. And what that means is that I interact with the public on a daily basis. Six days out of the week, everybody in this room knows where you can find me, for better or worse. So, that's something that I can bring to the table as well, a lot of availability. Thank you.
Oh, you can applaud. Go ahead. No, I'm kidding. My name is Tyler Eason. I am running for the at-large position on the school board. As an introduction, I am an Assistant Dallas County Attorney. That's my day job. I'm married to Stephanie, who is a nurse practitioner, a geriatric nurse practitioner. I have a son Bennett, who is in sixth grade, and a daughter Lucy, who is in third grade. Lucy asked me if I was running for president tonight, so no. I think I'll save some of this stuff for our first question, but I'm very excited to see so many people out here. I think whatever happens in the election, it's fantastic to see so many citizens and parents wanting to get to know us and getting involved in the board. So, I think that's fantastic. So, I look forward to answering your questions.
Good evening. I am Monica Moberg. My husband Adam and I have lived in Grimes for 11 years now. We have two children. Hayden is in third grade at Northridge and Emma is a junior at high school. We're very active in our church community. My husband has coached youth sports forever, so he probably has coached one of your children at some point. I am involved with the High School After Prom Committee and organize all of the teacher appreciation meals and activities for our high school teachers. When I was younger, I always wanted to be a teacher and my life took me different paths. So, instead of teaching, I thought maybe why not try to be on school board to at least make a difference that way?
I just want to say a big thank you to every single person that's here, anybody that's going to watch online. I think what we've learned over these past few years is that more voices at the table and more people getting a seat in terms of what this future looks like for our district is going to be a good thing. So, regardless of your belief system, regardless of where your views are at, which candidate you support, I firmly believe that as a district, the more voices that we have, it's going to be a good thing. So, thank you.
My name is Brandon McNace. I married the most beautiful woman in the world. She's over there. Her name is Erin. She's from Adele, but we're not going to hold that against her, okay? Sorry, I had to call her out. I have three boys at Dallas Center Elementary. I graduated from Iowa State University, Go Cyclones, with a finance degree. And then I went to work with, at Principal Financial Group in Investment Accounting. I did currency trading and then ultimately I got to what my dream job was. I got into real estate and I got to work in Houston and Austin and developed these amazing, these huge buildings, right? And then my life changed a little bit. My dad was diagnosed with ALS and then I quit corporate life to take care of him. Six months later, he passed away and what that gave me is a perspective. Not only do I have the perspective of graduating from Dallas Center Grimes, living here my entire life, other than college, but I have a perspective of searching after something and going after something that doesn't actually matter. And so, it gave me a new outlook on life, an outlook that says that I want to take risks, an outlook in life that says that no matter what, I want to be about the values that I stand for. So, I'm super excited that we get to stand up here today and tell you guys about what we're for, not necessarily what we're against and what the future looks like for this district. So, thank you.
All right, so we have our first question for the candidates and for this, we'll go from this way to this way, starting with Meg. My bad. Starting with Tyler, then on to Monica and Brandon and then Meg. And so, the first question is, what prompted your campaign for the Dallas Center Grimes Community School District Board?
Well, I would say it's the same thing that drove me to run four years ago. I think it's a commitment to local control. I think it's increased teacher retention, increased teacher recruitment, trying to formulate a clear plan for growth and fiscal responsibility. I don't think the pandemic has changed any of those reasons as to why I wanted to be a part of this school board four years ago. I try very hard not to be a single-issue candidate or revolve what I'm talking about as a single issue. I think the question that the pandemic has created is, when we get through this, and we will get through this, is what's next? What's next for Dallas Center Grimes, right? What's next for our growth? What's next for teachers? What's next for students? And we have to be able to answer that question, what's next? The other reason that I run is because I've been given so much from this community. My wife and I moved here seven years ago and we were welcomed and it started with my daughter, or my son, taking optional kindergarten and loving that program and receiving so much back. I learned a lot from my grandfather. My grandfather was superintendent to schools of walkie schools for 30 years. His name was Claire Eason and he did a lot. And if I can amount to 1% of what he did for his community, I'll be happy with what I've done. Service is important to my family. Service is important to me. I joined the National Guard at 38 and had to get signed off so I wouldn't die during boot camp because I was a little old. And, but I made it. And, you know, I think that service to one's community, utilizing the skills and traits that we have to better the people that we live with and leave our town and our place that we reside in a better place than we left it is what we're asked to do on this earth. And so, this is my little way of trying to contribute back.
I decided to run for school board because we're a growing district. We have opportunities to improve. We also have opportunities to remain the great district that we are. I am a big believer that parents need to be involved in their child's education in one way or another and have a willingness to serve and give back. This is my way of being able to serve and give back. It really does take all of us. I really am a big believer that it does take a village. Being an involved parent means volunteering at your child's school when the opportunities arises, talking to your child about their day, you know, what are they learning, who are their friends, talking to their child and having that communication with your children's teacher. If I'm elected to the board, I will bring fresh perspectives as I have a lens into both elementary and high school and by having the third grader and a junior. I always plan to put students and families first, be an advocate for the teachers. We really need to retain our amazing staff, so we need to listen to them, what their wants and needs are, and also be a voice for parents. I'm not joining the school board just so I can push my thoughts and ideas. I really do want to be a voice for other parents because sometimes you don't necessarily want to speak up. I will tell you, I'm not afraid to speak up. So, if you have a problem or you have an idea or whatever it is, I would love to hear it and I would love to be that voice for you.
So, if I'm being honest, I never really thought that I would be here. I never wanted to run for a political office for school board, but a few years ago, I was asked by a group of parents to attend a parent meeting with the administration. See, the issues that we are going to talk about tonight just didn't start overnight. Years ago, these parents basically said, "We have a ton of issues and we don't feel like our voices are being heard." Again, it didn't start during COVID. This was prior to COVID. And this one person that I know said, "Hey, would you come and support us and would you help lend some voice and credibility to what we're trying to say?" And I said, "Sure, but if I'm being honest, I didn't pay much attention to what was going on in our school district." And so, I said, "Could you inform me maybe like of a story or something that's happened?" She told me a story that changed everything for me. She told me a story of her young boy that was in fifth grade and was getting bullied constantly. Nothing was ever done, right? And one day, this young boy ended up going to the bathroom and when he was in the bathroom, kids snuck in under the stall, they pulled his pants down, they spanked him and the school district didn't call her, okay? She found this situation out as she was putting him to bed. She talked to him about it and she called the district the next day. And the kids that did this weren't punished. They had to say that they were sorry and then to punish them, they were given a pizza party, okay? And so, I'm listening to this mom tell me this story about her kid, which could be my kid, which could be your kid, and something inside of me started to get fired up. She told me that the only disciplinary action that was taken was that her son was removed from his classmates and given separate bathroom privileges. So, the kid that's already getting bullied is going to be further pushed away from his peer group and the bullies that should have had disciplinary action that can't handle the bathroom, right, nothing happened to them. So, I attended this meeting and I was shocked, surprised, as I watched parents, moms and dads crying, tears because of the things that were happening inside of this district and they felt like no one was listening to them. Not a single person, they felt like, was listening to them. And I watched as the administration looked at all of them and you know how you have a kid and you could say something to them, but when they're watching TV, they don't actually hear what you're saying? What I watched is this administration, the people that were present, they heard the grievances by the parents, but they didn't actually listen to them. And it was at that point that something stirred inside of me. I raised my hand and I said this statement that I stand by today. I said, "You have to realize," and we look at all of this from a political standpoint, "but you have to realize, we actually don't work for you." Every single person in this room has a stake at the table. Every single person in this room has a right and a responsibility for their voices to be heard. And far too often in politics and in school boards across this country, our voices aren't heard. And so, I said, "If our voices aren't heard, we have a responsibility as parents first, not school board members, but as parents to speak up for our kids." That's why I'm running. And the more I listen to parents and ask them questions, the stories that I hear would just disturb me and I want change in our district and I think that it's possible still.
When I learned that there would be an at-large position opening up on the board, I knew that my personal skill set could be very useful to our community. And like I said before, since I live outside the city limits, I'll only ever be able to run for an at-large position. And to borrow, edit and change a little bit just for keeping it clean, some phrasing from a friend who finds himself in a similar situation. "How do they ever think they're going to get folks with poop on their boots to make decisions?" And I think that's a valid question. Our rural households deserve representation and Dallas Center deserves more voices on the board. We need to work together to bridge our two communities and one way of showing this is to have a more equal balance of representation on the board. Additionally, in owning a public-facing business, I hear a lot of stories. All sorts of people tell me stories on a daily basis and I wouldn't change that for anything. However, some of the stories they come in and tell me really tug at my heart, just like Brandon said. I know that story. I know those people. It's hard and they need to be spoken up for. When I hear parents talking about their kids being bullied or hurt at school and not called or not communicated with, it's unacceptable. When I hear teachers aren't able to take their own kids to doctor's appointments because there aren't available substitutes, that's also unacceptable. And when I hear associates who have to leave our district to go work other jobs so that they can make a living wage, that's absolutely unacceptable. These kinds of stories are what make me want to help. I volunteered in DCE classrooms, admittedly not as much as I would like, but I've been there when teachers cry because they're overwhelmed or when the students want to save their holiday gifts from school to take home and put under their tree because they know there won't be any more at home. I've also taught in my own classrooms where I see how unprepared many graduates of the Iowa school system are for the next steps in life. And while part of that is the hubris of being a young adult, part of that is the fault of our school system. Our students are lacking critical thinking skills and the ability to ask questions. They'd rather be spoon-fed information and assurance of getting the right answer or take in the first bit of research without evaluating any of their sources. This leads to major difficulties in college and in the rest of their life. And finally, like I said before, I'm a forward-facing member of this community. I see several of you, several of you, on a weekly, if not daily, basis. I'm here for you, always. I live a life of service in everything that I do. I volunteer on committees in our town, the Seasonal Fund Committee. I'm also a member of the Betterment Committee for Dallas Center. And I feature local business makers and businesswomen, business people. I believe in community and being a voice for our community.
Our second question is, in what ways can the DCG educational model promote fairness, equity and respect within the classroom in order to create a positive and safe environment for students to share their ideas? And Monica, we would love to hear from you first. So, first, I think we need to ensure that both students and teachers know and understand the model. Both students and teachers need to be held accountable for creating a safe environment where all can share their thoughts and ideas in a respectful manner. And there needs to be, I'm sorry, teachers need to feel safe and respected in their classroom and should be able to communicate with parents. So, if a student or a teacher has a problem, they should be able to call the parent and not have fear of the parent yelling at them or going to administration because their son or daughter got in trouble. We need to go back to accountability and students need to be accountable for how they behave in school. One thing that I, like I said earlier, I want to be a voice for parents and for students. So, if students aren't feeling comfortable, we need to understand why. We need to be having those conversations. So, if a student wants to come to me or go to their parent, I would love to have that conversation. I would love to have the conversation with administration. If the school board's not aware that there's an issue, we can't address it. So, I think that's the biggest thing. But going back to the basics of respect for all, for both teachers, administrators and students, is number one priority.
York, I hope this isn't your question because I'm going to rephrase it a little bit, so sorry. Apologize if it's yours. But the question I want to answer is this. I think as a community, we have to, it's nice to talk about all this stuff, but we have to kind of back up. Let's go back to the basics. What is public education for? And I think every single person in this room and every single person that's watching online would say that public education is to take all of our kids, right? And to turn them into the best versions of themselves for not only our community, but our society, right? I think everybody would agree that that's probably the case. What happens though is the discrepancy of how we get there. So, when I see questions like this and I see words like equity, fairness, I'm going to throw in another word and it's tolerance. It's really easy to say these words and to be about these words, but far too often, not everybody, but far too often, these words are thrown around and the people that preach, because it is a belief system, that preach tolerance out of one side of their mouth are the same people that out of the other side of their mouth are preaching hate towards ideas that they don't believe in, right? And I'm sitting here and I'm looking at our classroom and I have a question for the community. Do you think things have gotten better since we have been promoting more equity and more tolerance? Do you think that classrooms have become a better version of themselves? My question is this. I just found out from a parent that we had the Gay Sexual, or not Gay, Gender Sexuality Alliance come and present to all of our middle schoolers. That's fine. The parents weren't made aware that this was happening and they didn't want their kids to participate. So, we're promoting equity and fairness, but kids were walking out of the classroom because they didn't feel like this was a spot for them. They didn't feel like this is appropriate thing that we should be talking about. So, if we're going to preach equity and tolerance, what about those kids that had to walk out of the room? Everybody's on this side talking about sort of a left agenda and no one cares about the other side and I don't think that's what the classroom should be about. I'm going to state a radical idea and this might be something that's crazy. What if we, instead of like, let's take math. So, if you're a math teacher, I'm not picking any, but let's take math. And I walk into a math classroom as a student. I don't see a transgender flag. I don't see a picture of Jesus or anything like that. I see the American flag and we talk about math. I have no idea what the teacher's about, other than I know this teacher loves to teach math. What if in all of the subject matters, again, take out everything that the left says we want our, because their beliefs taught and everything that the right says, that hey, these are our beliefs that we want taught. What if we didn't teach any of them? What if we went back to the basics? What if we, this is a radical idea too. What if we had a class that taught our kids how to change attire or balance a checkbook or actually function in society? When we focus so much on equity, on feelings, what we do is we create an environment where you will always have a group left out. When you teach belief systems, a group will always be left out. But when you teach principles in school, no group can be left out. So, what I want to do is create an environment where none of that is in the classroom. And I think everybody on the left and the right would agree that that's fair.
Having been an educator, I know that the only way to teach is when you're passionate about something. And absolutely nobody goes into teaching for the money or the glory or the fame or any warm fuzzy stuff. You only do it because you feel called to help. And it calls to you, right? It tugs at your heartstrings. You feel compelled to do something positive in somebody else's life. My students often laugh when I nerded out about things like source evaluations and ethos. They'd roll their eyes and giggle, but they'd listen and they knew that if it was safe for me to share things that I was passionate about, then it'd be safe for them to do so too. Leading by example is a powerful tool and our teachers and staff need to be supportive enough to get their passion back because without those teachers, we don't have a school. We also have to ensure that our teachers and staff have the foundational knowledge that allows for open discussions in the classroom. As our district grows and changes, diversity is guaranteed. Our administration needs to ensure that our educators are well-versed in how to handle different viewpoints, cultures, religions and races in our classroom. We might have students whose culture calls for fasting and if a teacher forces them to eat during their fast, there could be severe cultural consequences. And yes, this is based on an actual anecdote, albeit not from this district. And not only is this exposure to other cultures going to happen in our day-to-day lives, it's actually required by state law. In Iowa Core Standards for First Grade Social Studies, for the Content Anchor Standard in Civics and Government, teachers are to help students, and I quote, "Compare and contrast rules or laws within different communities and cultures according to 21st century skills." This is a real thing that Iowa law dictates. The beauty of this assignment, remember again, teacher nerd, is that it cannot possibly exist in a vacuum. In order for this project to make sense to anyone, age-appropriate context must be provided and explained. And our teachers are trained and licensed professionals who have the skills to masterfully explain to our first graders why it's illegal to run out of gas on the autobahn and why Day of the Dead is a national holiday in Mexico. And again, Iowa law requires this for first grade. Another idea for aiding our district in its ability to traverse our changing population is the hiring of a Coordinator of Equity and Inclusion. This position is designed to act as a safe space to ask questions, educate our teachers, students, staff, parents and community to handle these changes. They're coming, one way or the other. These people exist. The internet exists. Your kids are exposed to a lot of stuff and it's the conversation that's really going to make the difference. This coordinator would also act as a point person to ensure that our curriculum and policies are up to the standards set in place by Dallas Center Grimes and the state of Iowa, bearing in mind that once again, these are set in place by the state.
I'm going to try and answer the question that you asked. So, we're talking about the DCG educational model. I don't think anybody else mentioned what the DC educational model is. It talks about communication, consistency and collaboration. And it talks about collaborative culture focused on learning and results-oriented. That's what the board has come up with. That's the DCG educational model. So, that's what we're talking about. I have a lot of stuff written down, but I've also heard a lot of stuff. What we want to teach our children to do is to be critical thinkers. We don't want to feed them facts and figures so that they can recite facts and figures back, right? We want to teach them facts and figures so that they ask the next question and then the next question and the question after that to actually critique what they're being taught, to ask questions about why. That's how you create a fair environment, an environment that engenders respect. The other thing that we have to teach or promote within the classroom is that disagreement is okay. Disagreeing with one another in a civil and fair way is fine. I don't hate the person because I disagree with them on an issue. And too many times, we get down the track of, because I disagree with you on one thing, you do not exist to me. Disagreement is part of critical thinking. It's also important that the board get feedback from parents. If the board doesn't know what's happening, they can't correct it. And I think that issues have to be raised with the board and not talked about within the community and not talked about as anecdotal. If issues are raised with administrators and the board and then the board and administrators ignore that, then shame on them and we have to fix that. Lastly, I don't think we can rely on schools alone to teach fairness and equity and respect. We have to teach it at home. We have to teach respect in our houses. If schools are teaching respect and fairness and equity from eight to five, but we as parents aren't modeling that from five to whenever, it's a lost cause. So, I think that the educational model is spot-on. I think that in order to create that positive and safe environment, to share those ideas, we make it so that questioning ideas is okay.
All right, for the next question, it's quite a long one, so I'll just say first that Brandon will be starting. "What are your policy and funding priorities for our school district? What are your plans to keep the school district fiscally responsible? How will you ensure equal representation and funding of all aspects of the school? And do you agree with raising taxes to fund large projects?"
In my three minutes, I will try to answer all of that. So, I think I want to take a little bit of a step back. I think it's good to go line item by line. Why are we spending something, you know, is it useful, right? And I used to do that in the corporate world and real estate. I mean, it makes sense. But as I start digging in a little bit, as you talk to the teachers, right, they're the greatest asset we have. So, if you talk to the teachers, some very similar things, some ideas start popping up. And one of them is this. A teacher shared with me, she said, "Did you realize that we at DCG are some of the lowest-paid teachers amongst our peer communities?" I didn't know that. So, I'm questioning. I said, "Okay, so why is that the case?" She told me that a teacher just left to go 10 minutes down the road to make $15,000 more dollars. Okay. Then you start to research and you look at our sub-pay and I know some substitute teachers and they said, "Well, I wouldn't prefer to go to DCG because I make less there than I do in these other communities." Again, you start digging in and we can talk about budget, we can talk about line items, but when you dig in, you start hearing something different and these are our greatest assets. Then you start talking about paraeducators. My wife is one of them. People 100% do not get into teaching, especially paraeducation, in our school district to become rich. But what has happened over these past few years, and we can get into the budget, but what I can tell you is the past few years, some of the best paraeducators that we have have left our district because, and I'm not kidding you, they can make more money flipping burgers at McDonald's than working with our kids all day. Now, I'm sitting here looking at this. If you don't think this is an issue, I'm probably not your guy. But I sat there and looked at it and I said, "It's really easy to give lip service and say, 'Hey, these teachers matter,' but we actually don't put our money where our mouth is. We don't create an environment instead of losing the best teachers. Why aren't we the most competitive? We can build all these amazing facilities and I love it, but why aren't the best..." We can build all these amazing facilities and I love it, but why aren't the best and brightest from the other communities coming here and then they're talking about on their school board meetings, how people are coming to our district?" The other thing in the last minute that I have, that I don't think many people are probably going to bring up, and I'm not here to debate whether this is right or wrong, but on top of the governor's list right now is school choice. So there's a potential that your tax dollars will follow your student wherever you decide to go. So we can talk about the current budget, but I'm here to predict something. Unless things are changed right now, because I've heard a ton of people say, "Well, we left Johnston to come here and the same thing is happening here, so we're going to leave." Unless things are changed here, those dollars will leave this community, will leave this school district. And something else most people don't know about, as of October 1st every single year, there's a headcount that's done at the school. And roughly $7,000 per kid is given to the school district from the federal and the state levels. Well, for me and my family, if things don't change, I'm pulling my kids out, I will homeschool them, or, hey, let's start another private school. But I'm here to tell you right now, if I pull my kids out, there's $21,000. So instead of saying, "What are we going to do with the current budget?", what are you going to do with the budget shortfalls if we don't change these policies? And by the way, then instead of talking about the new building, we're going to talk about what teachers we need to get rid of.
Insofar as I understand the current financial situation of our district, bearing in mind that I was an English teacher, right, very different sides of campus, okay, not mathematically inclined. Um, it's ish, right? Like, it's, it's all right. We got a fancy new building, our building should hold us for a while based on the growth that we've got going on. So that's fantastic, we're going to hold tight for about, for a few years. It's imperative that we keep a close eye on this though, because these, these communities are growing, like gangbusters. And we need to pay attention, because we're going to need more neighborhood schools. There's a proposal on the table for, in addition, actually pretty close to our house in Dallas Center, for 270 new homes and 75 units of townhomes. This is over the next 10 years, right? So we've got a little bit of wiggle room. But with those people, come a whole bunch of kids. So neighborhood schools are going to be a real thing. And we need to make sure that both communities, both Dallas Center and Grimes are represented equally when we're talking about these new buildings. Our district does seem to have a general grasp on spending appropriately. However, it is absolutely time for our board to conduct a pay study for our teachers and support staff. I'm going to echo what Brandon said. Our teachers are woefully underpaid, our support staff is horrendously underpaid. This is a problem. Our last pay study showed, like, it was long enough ago, that our teachers are leaving. And it's, they're going, like you said, it's 10 minutes away. They're going to Johnston, they're going to Urbandale, they're going places that they can make a living wage, because our wages have not kept up with inflation. And we're losing them. And our benefits need to be reevaluated too, right? That's part of it. As far as raising taxes, I would be remiss to make a blanket statement on a hypothetical situation. It's not something I do, I don't live in blanket statements, I don't live in absolutes. Historically and currently, the DCG district has done a wonderful job of rolling budgets and managing their debts. So what that means is that as the debt of one major project is coming near its paying-off thing, then the district will take on new debt. They're not going to take on a whole bunch of debt at one time and find themselves in a pickle, they're going to pay it off in a reasonable amount of time. So, as, as that has been historically the case, we haven't found ourselves in a situation where we would need to raise any taxes for that. However, like I said, these are hypotheticals, we'll cross that bridge if and when we come to it. Yeah, I mean, let's look out for our teachers though. It's worth noting that we need to pay them more than what we do.
So when talking about policy and, and funding, I think it's important to talk about the numbers. And if you look at the last number submitted to the state, the average pay of a teacher in the state of Iowa is about 59.2. The average pay of a, of a teacher at Dallas Center Grimes is 58.7. That's the numbers. So we're right at average. Is that, is that good enough? Probably not. But we're not, we're not paying at the bottom of the pay scale, okay? Where we do need to focus is first-year teachers. First-year teachers in Dallas Center Grimes, the beginning salary is about $44,600. You can go to, and I'm going to list off some communities, you can go to Waukees, West Des Moines, Van Meter, Urbandale, Southeast Polk, North Polk, Johnston, Indianola, Ankeny and Boone, and get paid more as a first-year teacher. That is where we are hurting. That is where we cannot recruit, because we aren't offering what other districts are offering around us. I'm not saying that we don't need to support the teachers that are currently here, we have to. But if we're going to pay them more, we have to find out where it's going to come from in the budget. That's important, right? We can't just say, "We're going to, we're going to pay people more and that's it." Because that means higher taxes, higher levies, stuff like that. So what do we need to do? We need to look at administrative costs and reduce administrative costs. To me, the most important dollars are the ones that go to the frontline teachers and affect students, okay? We talked about becoming competitive with teacher and associate pays. For those of you that don't know about paraeducators and associates, they are the backbone of our district. They're the ones that do the one-on-one teaching with students, they are the ones that do all the hard work. And we don't pay them high enough. We need to talk about reducing our bond indebtedness. So right now, this community has been very supportive of its schools. Since 2010, we've passed bonds that equate to about $85 million. And that's all buildings that we've built, and that's fantastic. To me, to answer your question, do I agree with raising taxes? I think you go through the bond process. You make sure that there's a need, you put it to a vote to the community, and if 60% of the community agrees, well then, then we do it. If not, we find out where the community doesn't agree. But fiscal responsibility is important, but I think we do have to stay the course. I think it's important to continue supporting what the board does fiscally. I will also respond to something I heard. I don't think things are as bad as it's set up here, and I think that if things continue, I will keep my kids in this school, because I believe in this school. I believe in this community, I believe in the teachers that are here, and the administration, and the board.
We all know that we're a growing district and we have to be planning for our future. Plan, plan, plan. I cannot say that enough. I've seen the new plans for the high school and I am super excited for all of that to come to life. With that being said, we have to get it right the first time. It's going to cost a lot of money. And if we get down the road and we don't have enough space for band and choir all of a sudden, but we have this amazing turf football stadium, we're going to have a problem, right? So we need to make sure that we're planning for all of our aspects, which I think we've done a great job so far from what I've seen from the high school. The pandemic showed us that we were not prepared from a technology standpoint, not saying that every other school district was, but I think that we need to make sure that we're taking that as a lesson learned. I don't know about you guys, but having my second grader bringing home packets for way too long was way too much for me. So making sure that if we really want to implement the laptops across the board, then we need to plan for that. We need to make sure that we have one-to-one ratio from kindergarten all the way through. I don't want to want any new taxes. I will tell you, there's a lot more to school funding and finance than what you all think. But I will say, I think we can all agree that the city of Grimes, we pay a lot of money in property taxes. And I know a lot of people wonder where that all goes. So I don't want any new taxes, but with that being said, our tax levy does bounce around quite a bit. I've heard it's like $6 per thousand to $11 per thousand, up to, I think, 17 is what I've heard. So we need to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible, making sure that we're prioritizing the needs over the wants of the district and our teachers. I would love to pay teachers more, I would love to get paid more at my own job too, I think we all would. But that's something that we have to look at when it comes to the budget, is, as others said, we can't just throw more money at them if we don't have the money to begin with. So just making sure that we're looking in the years to come to make sure that we are levying appropriate dollars as needed.
So our next question has a couple in it, and they are, "How do you plan to address COVID-19 in the district as the virus continues to change? What actions would you take to prevent the spread of the disease? What are some positive key takeaways from the pandemic and how can we use those as we move forward?"
I get to field this one first, which I feel is a little loaded, but just kidding. I think that one of the positives that our family can take away from COVID is that we learned that our kids are absolute champions. Their resiliency through all of this, while the adults around them scrambled around like crazy people, was fantastic. Somehow our kids came out more sane, I think, than the grownups did. And those are my kids right up there. See, we make them do boring stuff like come to school board candidate forums. Champions. And I think that that's, you know, fantastic. We were also really lucky though. Our kids have fantastic immune systems. Not everybody else's kids do. Some kids have had to be in isolation this whole time, and that's really unfortunate for those families. I know that sometimes, so there are some special education kids who are legally supposed to be able to participate in the specials with their classmates. But they can't, because there's no mask mandate, and it is illegal for teachers to ask students to wear masks so that these special education students could also participate in library and guidance and art. That said, I know that, those, those two anyway, wouldn't mind popping on a mask for 45 minutes while they did some art projects so that their friend could come. I do wonder about that a lot. Are we doing more harm than good by ostracizing some of our, our students who need more care than, than those who don't? With this particular instance. Please don't confuse this story, like, this thought process, as a push for a universal mask mandate. Because it's illegal in Iowa, or at least it will be after the ACLU injunction expires. And we learned from our initial COVID response that maybe these days masks aren't appropriate for all people at all times. And I surely don't want to take someone, someone's bodily autonomy away, that's not a thing I would do. However, sometimes and in some instances, it's the right thing to do, especially as we get closer to flu season, because I swear, as great as my kids are, they bring home the flu every single year and it's disgusting and I'm over it. All this said, again, English, English teacher, not a doctor, not a doctor. My brother however, is an ER nurse at Broadlands, and he's, he's over there, so don't tell him I'm talking about him, please. And he was one of my first calls when I turned in my candidacy paperwork, because I knew that masks would be on the docket and I knew that I needed some medical information about this. And he said that the best way to mitigate this is masks and washing your hands. And this was at a time that the high school didn't have any soap in the bathrooms because of TikTok, thanks TikTok, so that's really gross. We didn't have masks, we didn't have soap. Thankfully the soap is back. But I think that when it comes to mitigating COVID, we all just need a little bit of kindness, we need a little bit of respect. We're all tired, we're all exhausted, but we need to care for each other. And I think that's really what it comes down to.
So I think it's important to rely upon medical expertise, public health expertise, educational expertise, what parents say, what kids say, you have to have that discussion, okay? As we've seen throughout this pandemic, particularly in the last six to nine months, COVID is a moving target, right? We had what I call the regular variant, now we have the crispy variant, right? Regular and Delta. Who knows what's in six months? Okay? Who knows what the winter is going to bring? Who knows with flu what it's going to bring? So there's really no way to say what a policy should be, but I can tell you what I will rely on to create a policy. To me, you have to have a collaborative discussion between experts in the community to make that decision. Your question talks about what actions would you take to prevent the spread? I'm vaccinated. That's a personal choice of everything, of everybody, excuse me. But I think if you, if you talk to people and look at what the CDC and everybody's saying, she said washing your hands, right? One of those simple things. Social distancing as best as possible, staying home when you get sick. The most important thing is getting information from those who are experts in the field. I'm an attorney. I don't know the next thing from what COVID-19 is versus what I've been told. But I sure will rely on what my wife, the nurse practitioner tells me, or my friend, the pharmacist, or my friend, the physician, okay? And I will rely on them and then have a conversation with the community as how to best move forward. I also think you have to look at data, you have to look at absentee rates, number of cases in Dallas and Polk County, vaccination rates, guidance from all those healthcare practitioners. Masks is obviously a political hot-button issue. Choice is important, parental input, input and choice is important. You also talk about the takeaways from COVID. If we look back to the first six months of COVID and we think about the grace that we gave one another, and the compassion, and the understanding, we had birthday cavalcades for kids that couldn't celebrate their birthday, and so we had cars drive by. We had, my kids didn't have physical contact with their grandparents for a year. And we think about back to when we gave each other some grace and some understanding. The other thing that the school learned is adaptability, agility, right? Streaming and recording classes, those things that we can pivot if necessary.
I think we have lessons that we've learned over the past year and a half on what we did right, what we could do better. Nobody's prepared for a pandemic though, so I think we have to give credit to this current school board for everything that they did do in a time of what we all, I think, deemed as a crisis. Last night during the school board meeting, Mr. Grimes gave a COVID update, and he said that as a district, which is 35-plus-hundred kids, we are averaging 10 cases or less a week, which has been on the decline for the last four weeks. So 3,500 kids and altogether we've got maybe 10 cases on average. This week, I believe the number was six. So I would say that's pretty good, right? We're never going to be 100%, COVID's here to stay, just like cold and flu season, strep throat, all of those other fun things that our kids bring home all the time. Vaccines are available to teenagers, they're available to adults right now, soon they're going to be available to our elementary-age kiddos. And I would just recommend families to do what is best for them, both in terms of masks and vaccines. Doesn't work for everybody and we cannot force it upon everybody either. As a district, we need to ensure that what we are doing to keep kids and staff in our buildings, whatever that takes, to keep them all safe and healthy. But I think that's one thing that we did learn in COVID is being out of the building and even hybrid was not healthy. It was not good on mental health, it was, maybe we didn't get sick, but I think a lot of kids' mental health declined as well. So I think that's our number one priority as a school district, is what we can do to keep our kids and our staff in our buildings. And like I said, COVID's here to stay, we have to learn to live with it. Steps to combat it, like Tyler said, hand washing, sanitizing, cleaning, back to the basics and everything that we do for cold and flu and strep season, right? Wash your hands, don't breathe on people, don't spit on people, common sense. And I would say too, last night at the board meeting, if you guys didn't hear, our custodians are working overtime right now to keep our buildings extra cleaned and sanitized. So parents, high school students, if you see custodians, tell them thank you for all of the work that they are doing and keeping everybody healthy and safe. And no more tearing soap dispensers off the walls in high school, please.
So one thing I learned is that our kids and the adults are super dirty, okay? We got dirty kids, all right? They're picking their noses, they're picking their butts. But one thing that worked, it seems like, is, hey, we're all washing our hands more, we have hand sanitizer everywhere and we're cleaning the surfaces. I don't know if you guys are like me, but during flu season, none of us got the flu. So I was sitting there, we're like, okay, so when we wash our hands after we go to the bathroom, this stuff works. In terms of COVID numbers, I don't know where you got your data, but I'm close to what you have. I saw on the webpage, so I was on the webpage, and as of October 21st, we have 11 students and teachers out, 11. So when we talk about COVID mitigation, I love that the students got to ask questions. I like to be a little bit more direct and I wish the taxpayers got to ask the questions. And I'll say right now that I would never be for a mask mandate, ever. I will never make that decision, because I fundamentally, this is what I believe. You will never convince me that some elected official, and I include myself in that statement, will care more about your kid than you will. Parents should always be the key stakeholder in their child's education, and I will not, I, I will make blanket statements. I will never ask a district to mask all of their kids, that's a personal choice. If you want to send your kids in masks, teachers, if you want to wear masks, that's up to you and that's fine. I will also, and, and, you know, it's not on the docket yet, but vaccine mandates, I would never require a student, and I would never require anything from our teachers that, really, why do I, why is it my business? It's between you and your doctor, you make the decision. And I think the problem in the community, what we had seen is 90-something percent of the community last year said, "We want our kids in school." And the board didn't follow that. And I can tell you right now that if we talk about data, the data suggests the safest place for our kids to be is not at their homes, it's actually in the schools. If you want to talk about underserved, underprivileged kids, the safest environment for them to be in, to learn, talk about access to school lunch, access to all these programs, that's in our schools. So I will never be for sending our, our kids out again in some hybrid learning when I[1782.25] So I will never be for sending our kids out again in some hybrid learning when I don't think that it makes sense. Now granted, we want to create the best environment for all of our kids. So what happens is autoimmune compromised kids kind of get pushed to the side, right? And if I'm being honest, I never really thought a lot about this until my nephew was born, who is nonverbal. And I understand what it looks like to be a parent and not know what you're going to do. And I see the stress that my family members, because he's not going to wear a mask. And so I've talked to parents already in the district and what I would say is this, let's create the safest environment for those kids, whether it be a room, and I know we already are kind of doing this, but I want them to have the best environment possible, but that's not going to be from taking away from the rest of our district. So again, I'm never going to be for masks, that's your choice. I'm never going to be for vaccine, that is your choice. And I want family members in this community to realize, you have the power in all of these decisions to dictate where this community goes from here.
Alright, we have our final of the first five questions that we have and it's, we're going to be starting with Tyler. And the question is, "In addition to the measures we have in place to support the social and emotional needs of students and staff, what would you do to amplify support behind this topic within the district?"
Well, I think there's a lot I could do as a board member. I do want to go back to one thing. I know Mr. McNay's talked about creating a room separate for immunocompromised students. We can't do that, that's not legal. It's separate but equal, we can't do that under Plessy v. Ferguson. So we got to figure it out. How do you support social and emotional needs of students and staff? And I'm going to talk to you guys because you're asking the question. Your mom and dads are listening, they're the voters, and I'm going to talk to you guys. Unplug from social media. Social media, back when I was young, when Facebook was created, it was created as a tool to connect with your family and connect with your friends and make it so that you could see what everybody was doing. It is my honest, humble opinion that it is a tool now used to bully, to demean, to debase. It's toxic. People have lost the ability to communicate interpersonally, what we're doing right now, right? It is very easy to sit behind a keyboard and a screen and a pseudonym and say what you want to say and have no consequence as to how you say it. So if you have a problem, talk to the person. Also, create a, supporting social and emotional needs. We have to destigmatize, we have to make it okay to talk about mental health. It is okay to not be okay. I am a juvenile delinquency prosecutor as part of my docket in Dallas County. So I deal with juvenile crime. And I could say wholeheartedly that mental health is behind almost all of the cases that I deal with. We have to address it in school. We have to say that it's okay to talk about. I am intimately familiar with mental health personally. Anxiety, depression, and it's okay to talk about. We also have to provide support for students to be themselves in school. Students need to be okay with coming to a school building and knowing that the characteristics that define them are not just accepted, but they're celebrated. That they make up our student body and they make up our community, they're our future leaders. We want to work to bridge the gap between students, staff, and parents so that we can have this conversation so that if you guys have an issue, you can talk to mom and dad, they can talk to a board member, and that can get taken care of. I think right now we have divides between all those areas and we don't hear what's going on.
This has been a big topic with the school board. I know it was briefly talked about last night at the school board meeting, so I think if you follow what's going on in the school board meetings, we're going to hear a lot about social and emotional health and needs over the next year. A new group was recently created at the high school called SOS, Stomp Out Stigma. And I think this is really incredible to see. I love seeing both faculty and students involved in talking about a topic that, like Tyler said, it used to be taboo. When I was in school, we didn't talk about this. We both have, we have children that suffer from anxiety. I have suffered my entire life. I will tell you, when I was a kid, it was not okay. I cried almost every single day of kindergarten and first grade because I was so scared and I didn't want to be at school. But they didn't know how to deal with me, so they would just send me to the principal's office and I would sit on a folding chair for hours until I quit crying. Like I was actually kicked out of preschool because I cried so much that my preschool teacher called my mom and said, "Come and get her because I don't want to deal with her anymore." If they would have talked about it, if we could have gotten to the root cause sooner, I wouldn't have had to go through all of that. So I think it's amazing that the high school has started this group. I would love to see this group be formed at Oakview, the middle school. You know, guidance counselors are a great resource at all levels in all the buildings. One opportunity that I think we have, and like I said, my family has personally experienced this, is better communication and transparency from the district. Parents don't know what resources are out there or that our schools can help with because we don't talk about it. We don't talk about it until it's too late or until there's a problem. Then all of a sudden, we scramble. So if we can be transparent, if we can communicate with our families of all the available resources and make it okay to talk about, I think we would all be better off. Parents would be less stressed, the children would be less stressed, they would feel more comfortable in school. That's our number one goal, right? Students should feel safe and secure in school. So guidance counselors at all levels. I will say that students don't always feel comfortable talking to their guidance counselors and we need to fix that. Personally, our daughter, I've asked her if she's ever gone and talked to her guidance counselor when she feels overwhelmed in school and she told me, "No." Why is that? Does she not know her guidance counselor? Does she not think that she's available? So we need to get to the root cause of that and they need to be made available, if that's going to classes and introducing themselves or whatever it needs to be. We also need to think creatively and empower administrators in the buildings to collaborate with students and teachers to come up with creative measures that can be implemented.
Alright, I just want to say appreciate the jab, real quick, that was really good. But I want to tell you what I'm about because it's really easy to poo-poo on other people's ideas when it's currently happening. But I want to tell you what a vision about what I believe going forward. I want to be positive and a great leader, what he does is he doesn't turn to the left or to the right, he tells you what he's for. So I know when we're talking about this issue, it's very similar to me to question number two. When we talk about this issue, when we talk about equality and fairness, it's very similar to that question, but I want to take a different turn. So I want to ask the community, do you think things have gotten better in our community as it relates to fairness, equity, all of these things? If you think things are better than they were before, I'm not your guy. Because I don't believe that they are. It's easy to say we're going to hire counselors when they actually don't treat the root cause. The root cause, what I've noticed is that it's, what we teach right now is the differences. We highlight how our students are differences. I know of another district, they did 55 cultures and they celebrated the different cultures. They didn't talk about what made those cultures different. When you highlight differences in a community, all that does is create divide. For example, I can tell you right now that my two, I have two nieces from Uganda. And this is a real example, a classmate of theirs, another person of color, said to my nieces that they weren't black enough, right? And that they were whitewashed because they were raised by white parents. So my question as a community is, do you think these things are getting better and our current mitigation strategies are working? What I can tell you right now that this, if you boil it all down for me, it all goes back to bullying, right? Jesus Christ said that all of us, right, are created in the image of God. You don't have to believe it, but I'm telling you that I do believe it. And that means whether your race, your gender, whatever color you are, you have equal right to be in this school district, you have equal right to be heard. And if we actually, we have a zero tolerance policy bill, we don't actually discipline any of the kids. So if you come to school and you make a kid feel less than, if you talk down to them and say that they're not equal to you, then something should happen to you. I don't care what your political agenda, I don't care what family you're from, no kid should have to come to school, but what we do is we like to sweep it under the rug. And I'll give you a good example of this. So we teach our kids, we have to realize as a community, our kids are so malleable and we teach our kids to be hateful, to notice differences. My youngest son, there's a recording one of my nieces had and I just love this. And she made a statement to my youngest son and she said, "Don't you realize that I'm adopted?" My youngest son didn't realize that his niece from Uganda was adopted. And he goes, "Wait, what? You're adopted?" And she looked at him and she said, "Well, don't you think I look different than my mom and my dad?" And he goes, "I had no idea that you were adopted." Because in our house, we don't call them my black nieces, we don't call them my white nieces, they're just family. And so when we get back to the basics and we highlight the good things about this community, all of the other junk, all of it's going to melt away.
I live by the motto that we all do better when we all do better. And I think that we all know that people do better when they feel connected to something. And that's especially true for kids. If we're able to help students identify a community that works for them, that can only be a positive thing. So when I've been speaking to teachers and parents and students and community members, clubs and groups seem to be the best thing. This seems to be like the most important thing that these people want. They would provide a huge sense of community to students who might otherwise be unable to or are disinclined to participate in more traditional extracurricular activities. Not everybody's going to be an athlete, unfortunately. Not everybody's going to be a band kid, or a drama kid, I'm always totally a band nerd. But that's not for everyone. That can be cost prohibitive, it can be time prohibitive, it can just not interest you. But clubs could be cool. This is also an arena where we could look at local businesses and see if they'd like to partner with or mentor students. Let's push the trades. Not everybody wants to go to college. I'm totally for that. Somebody, some point earlier today said, "Let's teach a class about changing tires." Heck yeah. Like literally a week ago, two, alright, two weeks ago, I had a tire explode on the side of the road. I do know how to change a tire, but those lug nuts are a too-adult situation these days, okay? It's not, it's not like the olden days. But if we're able to get local businesses involved, if we're able to build community not only within the schools themselves, right? You help, you find your group for whatever it is that you're interested in. Think about it, it could be like plumbing, it could be electrical work, auto maintenance, or there could be like gamers, or they could be like comic book people, or they could be chess, I don't know, is there a chess club? I should have, I should have researched that before I just threw that out. But crafts or poetry, we could teach knitting in sixth grade, you know, whatever. Like anything that people and kids could get excited about is going to build a sense of community and give a sense of grounding in a time that there is so much divide. And this is also great for teachers, because all of these clubs need to have a teacher sponsor. And this is a way that we can get our educators involved with our kids, not necessarily just in a very strict standard, you know, math, English, social studies, science, you know, back and forth situation. But it humanizes the teachers also. And when you humanize someone, it makes them a heck of a lot less scary. Conversation fixes a lot of things. If you have questions and you can ask them in a safe way, that's the best way that we can make people feel safe. And I think that it's really important, just to reiterate, that our superintendent did mention last night at the board meeting, that no kid should ever feel uncomfortable or scared and that we need to do better as a district. And I think coming together is the only way that we can do that.
We will now have you guys go with your closing statements. Yeah, we're working our worst order.
Alright, so I think in closing, what I want the community to know is, if you, you know, those two candidates and me are running for the same seat. You have the power to dictate where this community goes, regardless of what you've been told. You have the power to determine what happens in your children's education. You are the primary stakeholder, your voice matters the most. So that means you need to go out and vote and you need to make your voice heard. And I love the fact that we had questions from the kids, but I think going forward, I would love questions from the taxpayers. And so just rapid fire really quick, I would just want to answer a couple of questions that I know that are coming up. And I won't dance around the issues and I'm going to tell you exactly what I think. I don't want to ever introduce critical race theory into our school. When you study the historical background of that, it's based on critical theory, which was designed by Karl Marx, again, that goes back to my division thing. I will never be for something that is divisional inside of our community. I won't ever be for a biological boy ever going into a girl's bathroom or vice versa. I know we like to dance around that issue. And I feel for kids that say, "Hey, I don't feel comfortable in my own body and that hurts, they would feel like that, that really just hurts me to my soul." So we can create a special bathroom for them, but honestly, I don't think that it's appropriate to send the message, "Hey, if you're a boy, you get to go into the girl's bathroom." I don't appreciate the lack of respect that we currently have for our teachers. I'm not going to be okay with how our kids are currently flipping off the flag in school. There's a lot of incidences that if you heard about animated sexual videos being shown at the elementary level. All of these things are happening and no one really knows about it. I am for material that is no sexual material in it at all, because our kids, like I said, are so malleable. Our kids and what they learn in school will dictate the future of this community. So going forward, I want everyone to know in this room that regardless of what you've been told, you, you all and everyone watching online are the primary voice for what this district looks like going forward.
First of all, I just want to tell all of you, thank you for coming out to this tonight. As Ann said, we have the most candidates ever running for school board in several years. So this is a really exciting time in our community. It's a really exciting time for our district to have some change and some fresh perspective. Your vote is your voice, so please use it. Here's a plug, if you filed your absentee ballot, get it in because it's due and it's not going to count, so get it done. And if you live in District 2, I just respectfully ask for your vote and support on November 2nd. Thank you.
I think this is great, how many people are out here. Whatever, whatever happens in this election, it's fantastic that this many people gave up a night to come listen to candidates who guide their school. And so that gives me solace. Thanks to you two for coming up and asking the questions. And I know you were supported by your classmates that came up with the questions, but it takes a lot of guts to sit in front of a lot of adults and ask tough questions, so thank you for that. I think we have a great school district. I'm proud to be a parent of a child in Dallas Center Grimes School District. Do we have things we can work on? Absolutely we do. Absolutely we do. But we have so much going better for us and for our district and for our children than not. We have fantastic teachers. We have fantastic associates, we have fantastic staff. You are the voice that guides the board and your vote matters. And so I would ask for your vote as an at-large candidate, but what I would ask you to do is vote. Vote. That's how you get your message across. There are differences in candidates. And disagreeing is okay, right? But you have three very different people up for at-large board seat. And I think each brings its own qualities to the table. But if this showing is indicative of what we have going forward for the district and you two are indicative of what's coming out of the district, I think we're doing okay.
For real, bravo. I haven't had an audience this large in a really long time, so thanks for coming out, guys. Totally kidding. It's imperative that we all stay as involved in all levels of government, right? This is nonpartisan, or at least it's supposed to be. But show up to your city council meetings, show up for your neighbors, show up to your school board meetings. You have to exercise your voice. That's, that's the number one thing. I would also like to say that this is just a really big community, right? And communities are made up of neighbors and neighbors are people too. So to reiterate the idea that disagreeing doesn't mean that we dislike each other or that we are, you know, fighting or anything like that. And in fact, it's the very opposite. In Dallas Center, I've had people that I know don't agree with me on next to anything come to my defense when necessary, right? Neighbors take care of each other, I think that's an Iowa thing. We look out for one another. And at the end of the day, every single person up here only got involved in this because we care about our kids and we care about your kids and it takes a village. And we all want to help. That's the big thing, right? I think it was Mr. Rogers said something about, "Look for the helpers." We want to be your helpers. I want to be your helper. Thank you.
This concludes our forum this evening. I want to send a final thank you for all of you, much as they have thanked you for coming this evening. Being educated, being an educated voter, the candidate is an important step of this whole process. We appreciate the time it takes to be responsible, engaged, and engage in positive, cordial discussion. Special thank you to the candidates tonight for coming out and for their time this evening. And a final thank you to our students, Isabella and York. And it is, it's really truly an exciting time for DCG, from our growth to the strong education we offer to our education we offer to our students by our high-quality teachers, staff, and the processes that we have in place. We will look forward to the future of continued DCG excellence. Have a great evening.